Because has been.
The time is now five oh two. I call the order, I call to order the January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three Policy and Governance Committee meeting. Welcome and opening remarks. Good evening and thank you all for being here. My name is Alvarez Ronreese, Chair of the Policy and Governance Committee and student member of the board. It brings me great pleasure to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting and I look forward to our great work tonight. Our first yield to our new Vice Chair Walter Fields for any remarks.
Mister Fields.
Mister Fields. Do you hear us? Okay. Mister Fields, can you hear us? Okay. Okay. We may need to work on that Cindy. But I'll move forward. Well, so we'll have introductions of committee members, starting with board members, all administration, then board office staff and board legal counsel.
Thank you, Chair Sharon Ruiz. My name is Judy McInnes Murray. I am the Chair of the Board and a member of, a voting member of the Policy and Governance Committee.
Hi Pamela Boozer Struther, Board Member for District Three and Member of the Committee and just want to congratulate our student member of the Board, Board Member Sharon Ruiz on your chairmanship of this committee. Look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Jonathan Briggs here, District Two Representative, and also obviously a member of the Board. Congrats to Chair Sharon Ruiz and Vice Chair Fields.
Thank you, thank you.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Landis. I'm actually a consultant who has been retained by the Chief of Staff Michael Dickerson and CEO Dr. Monica Golson. My job has been to do observation assessment, make recommendations in terms of how to improve the functionality of the Board Office. I will be with you for the next two weeks. And I'm really, it's really a pleasure to be here and congratulations Judy McInnes Murray for the new leadership position. Well deserved. And I'm just really honored to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I miss Miss Welsh and Mister Fields.
Good evening. My name's Robin Welsh and I'm the Director of Government Relations Compliance and Procedures and it will be a pleasure working with our new Chair, Chair of the Committee as well with our new, as well as with our new members of the Policy Committee. So, welcome to all. Congratulations. Thank you.
All right, Mister Fields.
Okay, I can hear you now.
All right.
Excellent. Geez. Technology. Introduce yourself, Mister Fields. I am Walter Fields. Do you need anything more than that?
That's good.
You're the Vice Chair.
Thank you, thank you.
Call you back, okay?
And our Board Office. And then legal counsel.
My name is Cindy Adley. I am the Administrative Support Staff to the Policy and Governance Committee. And I'm also the Assistant to our new Chair, Ms. McInnes.
Good evening, everyone. Dennis Whitley III, the Law Office of Chippewa and Horn, and we are Board Counsel. And congratulations to the new Board Committee Chair and Vice Chair and the new Board Chair as well. I look forward to working with everyone.
Thank you, thank you. Alrighty, so I think we have a full house, so we have a quorum to keep business moving. Okay, so one point three adoption meeting agenda. May I have a motion to adopt January seventeen, twenty twenty-three meeting agenda?
I move to adopt January seventeen, twenty twenty-three meeting agenda.
Of a second. Has been moved in properly second to adopt the January seventeen, twenty twenty-three meeting agenda. Any objections? Here none, motion passes. Agenda is adopted. Alrighty, approval of the committee meeting minutes. May I have a motion to approve the December thirteen, twenty twenty-two meeting minutes?
I move to approve the December thirteen, twenty twenty-two minute, uh, meeting minutes.
Thank you. It's been moved in properly second to approve the December thirteen, twenty twenty-two meeting minutes. Any objections? Here none, motion passes. All right, two point oh, two point, all right, there are no registered public comment speakers this evening. Registered public comment speakers can be live, pre-recorded using video or audio or written. Alrighty, three point oh legislative update. Three point one update on MAVE Legislative Committee Meetings. I'll now yield the floor to Miss Welsh to update us on the MAVE Legislative Committee Meeting.
So, um, myself and, um, Board Member McInnes Murray and, um, Cindy, uh, wrote, Cindy, yes, Cindy, as well as Board Member Business Strutter all attended the MAVE Legislative Committee Meeting, uh, the first one for December, not December, January, excuse me. And at that meeting, um, they basically just went over again some of their legislative priorities and provided an update on those as well as discussed the advocacy process and the legislative process. So it was sort of like educational training for everyone in terms of moving forward through the legislative process. It was, it was quite informative.
Thank you. Alright, we'll move on to, um, the May Blueprint Implementation. Uh, I'll now yield the floor to Ms. Boozer Strutter to update us on the May Blueprint Implementation Ad-Hoc Committee.
I thank you so much, Chair. I, um, uh, on behalf of my liaison role to MAVE's, uh, Committee giving, providing this report. And, uh, I wanted to just first note that the, um, document, uh, prepared for the Board will need to be added to this agenda item and, and Board Docs. I, I thought that had gone up, so I, I did just want to note that before I forget. But the, I want to thank, um, Board Member Fields for joining with me to draft a memo to our colleagues about where we are with the stage of the blueprint, uh, plan drafting. Uh, that memo included that the AIB had finished the overall draft plan on December first and then directed the LEAs, the twenty-four LEAs to draft their plans of response and they were provided a a hundred-page template to do so. And many of you know that we, of course, have been instituting this plan based on the blueprint legislation and, uh, it's not like we're starting from scratch by any means at all. Um, it's just that the AIB was delayed by the, the former, soon-to-be former Governor. Did delay the AIB which delayed all of these timelines. So this is where we are and now our blueprint coordinator, uh, Dr. Carl Libby will be is managing a team of more than ninety-five hundred of our, uh, PG CPS employees of our colleagues to draft the plan and the, the five key pillars. For governance, I have been teamed up with, uh, Mister Fields on that, on a particular task in that. And so, uh, all of our colleagues have received the overall plan so that once the PG CPS plan comes, there's a deeper understanding of what, what they're reading. And on February fourteenth, at this meeting, uh, Dr. Libby will be presenting with a team from, from this larger working group where things are in the plan because on March, her goal is to have the plan finished on March first because it's due on March fifteenth, so she'll have that time. So unless there's any questions, that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Business Strutter. Cindy, Miss Adlin.
Permission to address Ms. Pamela. I do have one question. Are we referencing the letter that was sent up to all Board Members? Is that what you would like to have uploaded to Board Docs?
That's correct. It's the cover memo with the full plan attached. Thank you for checking.
All right. Thank you, Miss Business Strutter. Board Members, any questions? Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Alrighty, we'll move on forward to four point oh, Policies for Discussion. Tonight, there are six policies for discussion. Colleagues, keep in mind the number of policies we have tonight and to be cognizant of everyone's time, I would like us to adhere tonight to the five-minute and three-minute rounds for discussion. Um, Miss Adlin will be tracking that, so just so everyone's on loop with that. Um, and so we'll first start four point one, Policy thirty-five oh six, Public Charter Schools. I'll now yield the floor to Miss Welsh to give us an overview of the proposed revisions for this policy.
So, um, with Policy thirty-five oh six, um, I had shared at the last meeting that we, in the Maryland law, uh, it's Education Article nine dash one-ten, there was specific language that talked about what a school system's policy should contain, uh, which was evaluation of the charter school revocation of the charter reporting requirements and financial programmatic and compliance audits for public charter schools. Um, also, if you recall, we did have, um, Elizabeth Saunders, who's the Instructional Director for Charter Schools and Dr. Monica Gaines, who is, uh, the Charter School Liaison, came to our last meeting and did a presentation and talked pretty, gave us a nice overview of everything that's involved in the entire charter school process from the beginning when someone applies to have a charter up through the end, when they're actually having the charter and the charter schools operating. So I also share with you that our policy is, was quite old. It was from two thousand and ten. And basically, it just, um, defined what a charter school was, but it didn't have any other information at all in the charter school. So in essence, I was, I really went through and, and really almost rewrote the entire charter school a policy to reflect what are the requirements in the law, the information that, um, also that, uh, so, um, uh, Elizabeth Saunders had shared with us at the last meeting. So, uh, yes, uh, Cindy, if you wanna, um, I think you, yes, if you want to go to the, um, to the policy and you can pull it up so we can just look at it. And I'll just, I'll just, I won't go into a lot of detail because it's here for you to read, but I can at least tell you what components I did include. So if you would just scroll down first to the, just, uh, just a little bit, Cindy. So I can talk a little, okay, right there, it's a policy statement. So what I did for the policy statement, since we do have a strategic plan that goes into a good amount of detail about what, uh, the plan is and what we want to move forward. I pulled language from that strategic plan because we do have language that says, um, that we want to provide every, uh, Prince George's County Public School Student with a premier education characterized by innovative, relevant, assessable learning and development opportunities that build twenty-first century competencies. And so if you look at the requirement for a charter school, charter schools are supposed to be, they're supposed to be providing innovative, uh, curriculum and new ways of teaching. Um, that's different from our regular public schools. So that's why I thought our language in this strategic plan was quite appropriate for, including in the policy statement. Um, I then went through and added some definitions to help make the policy a little bit, uh, uh, more clear. So if you just scroll down a little bit, um, I come to the standards then. Um, so the standards, I think, are probably the most important. It starts off with the Board's authority. And so the Board absolutely has the, um, is, is what is, who is responsible for basically, uh, accepting an application, uh, as, as the application goes through the power, the application process. Um, and the Board actually, uh, the school system has a hundred and twenty days to review, evaluate the application and then, uh, make a determination. And the CEO and her staff will also review it and then give a recommendation to the Board of Education and then the Board of Education from there will review it and make a decision on whether or not they're going to accept the, the application or not. And if you continue to scroll down a little bit, Cindy, to the next page, then it talks about, um, the, the, what I just shared with you. If in fact the Board does deny the public charter school or application, then the applicant may appeal that decision to the State Board of Education as a four-two oh five C appeal. Um, as far as some of the things then, some of the basics in terms of charter schools, uh, the, we have public school, uh, sp- public charter school funding, which is, um, whatever that we as a system provide each public school in our, in our school system. Then we are also required to provide commensurate amount with, to the public charter school. Um, and but, and the, um, charter school has, has the right to, the operator has the right to make, to do financial management and decision-making. But just like a public school, the CEO, uh, it retains the authority and responsibility for, uh, approving the charter school's annual budget every single year. Um, as far as in student enrollment, and it is, um, that should be open to all students in a space available basis, except for where we might have a lottery. Uh, and that, and then that would draw, would, uh, drive how, which students would be approved to, um, be in the public charter school. A particular one that was applying, it is, we did, I, I did add language that talks about the fact that we will not discriminate against any student on the basis of race, color, national origin, citizenship, status, religion, marital status, sex orient, uh, sex, sexual orientation, gender, identity, disability or age. And then I also referenced the fact that students, um, they, uh, with IEPs absolutely have a right to go to a charter school and the charter school has the responsibility of making sure they implement the, um, IEP for the student. The next thing has to do with school facilities and charter schools are responsible for meeting all federal, state and local facility, health and safety standards. If you can scroll down to the next page, Cindy. Uh, as well as they, they must also be appropriate for the educational programs being offered and they need to meet all the ADA standards so that they are accessible to all students. As far as auditing and reporting requirements, so if, if you recall, I think when we were looking at maybe, um, I think it was, I can't, it was just recently a policy that we were looking at had to do with, uh, I want to say the oversight policy and it talked about the responsibilities of the Board and the CEO and all the reports that the Board of, the Board of Education is responsible for providing to like MSTE, which those reports come from the, uh, CEO and the CEO gets her reports from each of our schools. And in this instance, it's saying that charter schools also have to comply with all of the applicable reporting requirements. Um, as well as they must, um, follow through and they're required to go through the same financial programmatic compliance and or internal audits that are, that are consistent with the law and regulations as well as our board policies and administrative procedures. And so we, our public schools actually go through, uh, numerous audits and so the public, the charter schools would go through the same. Um, and then the charter school i- is evaluated on student achievement and this would be by the Board. Student achievement, fiscal management and other criteria pursuant to the approved application. So depending on the conditions that were written into that charter contract, there might be some very specific provisions that when it comes time to do an evaluation of how this charter school is operating, that the, those specific provisions would also be considered in the evaluation process. Um, now that the, uh, Board of Ed does have the right and the responsibility to revoke a, a charter school agreement for any one of the following reasons. So then if you would just scroll down further, Cindy, and this lists out all the, the, um, the, uh, things that could happen that would cause the Board of Education to want to revoke a charter school, um, agreement. For example, the, uh, the school or the operator breached, breached the contract, first of all. Or they failed to comply with many of the federal, state or local law requirements. Uh, their fiscal condition might be substantially deficient. Um, they, as far as academics and instructional services, that could be a reason because there's, they might be substantially deficient. Um, the facility itself might not be meeting the needs for the educational program, uh, and it, um, there might be issues related to, um, health, safety and security for the students and staff. Um, and then also, um, this, this, the actual operation of the school might not be in the best interest for our students. So those would be all the reasons, um, and this all comes from the law, but these would be all the reasons that the, um, the Board of Education might consider, um, revoking a, uh, charter school. And then once the, the applicant, the, uh, if, if the agreement were revoked, the, um, personnel and students would be reassigned um, based on our policies, administrative procedures and negotiated agreements. So generally speaking, most of the students would be going back to their, to their home schools unless they have decided to, um, that say they, uh, do, uh, uh, sign up for a lottery for one of our other specialty schools, something like that. And then all the resources that were provided by the Board of Education originally, they still remain under the control of the Board of Education. And then if you proceed a little bit further, Cindy, um, and, um, I think that's basically it. And then the CEO is responsible for developing an administrative procedure to implement this policy. So that, that's sort of it in a nutshell. Does anyone have any questions?
Now, I actually, um, well, I'm not sure if I need to be recognized or not.
Yeah. Alrighty, thank you, Miss Welsh, Mister Riggs. Um, you go ahead.
Great. Um, just one piece. Thank you, Miss Welsh, as well. Um, I thought this was great. Um, one area that I would just add, not necessarily a question, but just maybe a amendment, um, that could be considered is, um, around the discrimination piece. It mentioned, um, trying to find it. So if you find it before me, then just tell me where I should be at. This is after the definitions. So let's see. Well, anyway, you said gender identity. I just wanted to suggest adding in gender, um, because I think that gender identity is a little bit different. And then also adding in gender expression, um, just to make sure that the language is inclusive. Um, so those are just two things that I, as you were kind of sharing, I was thinking about as maybe additions to the gender identity, um, gender and gender expression.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Mister Fields.
Um, I was wondering when I read the policy statement and the purpose, you know, when charter schools were first, um, created, there was supposed to be laboratories that traditional public schools could look at and, you know, provide some examples that innovations could then be applied to traditional public schools. And I was wondering if there was anywhere in our policy statement where we could state that because I think there's a lot of confusion among parents of why charter schools can do certain things and traditional public schools can't. And why can't those benefits be extended over to traditional public schools? You know, I think we've created a system in public education where people look at charter schools as not as public schools. And I think the, the lessons learned in charter schools, not all of them, but some of them cannot be applied to our traditional schools. So just somewhere in there, talking about the nexus between our public charter schools and our traditional public schools.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other further discussion? Okay. So I guess, Miss Welsh, um, if these revisions can be made and I guess, um, would, we just bring it back the next meeting for action or would it just be for more discussion?
Ask it that question, but I will let you know that I think, I think it will be ready then for action. If, if we are saying it's going to be ready for action, then I need to send it to both the Office of General Counsel, the Board's Attorney, Dennis Whitley, and then also the CEO has to go through it and approve it also. So, um, I, you, you tell me how you like to proceed. If we're going to go in that direction, then I can take it through the review, uh, pro- review and approval process.
Um, colleagues, I mean, I'm okay with the revisions that were brought up tonight. Um, anyone have any objections towards? Um, what was mentioned by Mister Fields and Mister Briggs? If not, um, then yeah, Miss Welsh, um, if it could continue on and be brought back to the January thirty-first meeting, um, for action.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, four point two, Policy eighty-one hundred, Standing Committees and Focus Work Groups. Miss Welsh, I'll yield to you again.
Okay, let me one second.
Miss Adlin, did you have a hand up?
Yes, I do have a quick question. Another meeting is January thirty-first. Are we going to be ready by then for that one or we're gonna do February? February's meeting.
Um, so I, I have to say that if we have, uh, I think five or six policies today that are up for, uh, discussion, six. And if people are ready to move forward, then that's going to be six policies that are going to move forward, um, for action. Saying that though, because, um, everyone that is on the list that has to do review and approval also do many other things. I don't know that they can move that many policies through in the approval process, uh, that quickly. Um, I, I don't want to speak for them, but I just know that's, you know, that's a lot of policies to have to review and, and then get, and approve. So I, I don't know if we want to, at this point, say let's take it through for action. But if in fact we're not ready, then, um, I would have to let you know at the planning meeting in a week. Because I, I'm going to move at anything that we have tonight, I will move out for the, the review process tomorrow so that they have as much time as possible to start that review process.
Okay, if you could just bring a recommendation to the planning meeting and then we'll decide which policies.
Okay.
This one can move forward.
Okay, uh, are we, the next policy, the stand, the eighty-one hundred, which is, uh, Board's Post, Board of Education Standing Committees and Focus Groups. So the main changes, um, with, I think our big conversation at our last meeting had to do with the process, first of all, identifying who are the members of each of the standing committees and then who is the, uh, leadership of the standing committees. And, um, when, when would this happen? Would this happen in June or August? So if you go to, um, the, the understandards where it says, uh, Committee Member App- Appointments. Um, I did, I did basically cut and paste. So, um, Board Member Business Strutter had recommended that we go back and look at the Board Policy from two thousand nineteen because that policy, uh, was probably, uh, a much more functional policy. It worked, uh, had, it was more democratic in the process of identifying who would be on these committees and who would be the leadership of the committees. And so I did go back, I followed that recommendation. The rest of the committee members thought that we should go do the same. So we, I went back and looked at that recommendation and incorporated most of that language. I know that at our meeting, there was language about the student board member and, and what standing committee would that student board member be allowed to be, be a member of. And actually, in the two thousand nineteen policy, it actually said that they can serve as a member at any of the standing committees. So I incorporated that language into the policy. Um, and then, and I have, have that, it would be the, um, Board Chair who would be making the responsibility. It would make, be making the, uh, decision about who would be, uh, who, what were the appointments for which committees. So if you look at that language, it comes basically directly from policy, from the policy of two thousand nineteen. Now, um, another piece of the, of the conversation came from the fact that, um, uh, the question about when and should we do it in June or should we do it in August? So just to give a little bit of background information, um, several people in the committee last time felt it was important to do it in June so that we could begin working. Uh, every, the committee could start working in August and we wouldn't be dealing with appointments and leadership and that type of thing. The concern was, is that the Board, the student Board Member, though, doesn't actually get officially, and please jump in if I'm not saying this correctly, but doesn't officially get, uh, uh, identified or knows that they are now a member until the end of June. And so would they have the opportunity to, uh, participate in any of the standing committees that they would like to, you know, so they can put in what they would like to be a part of. Um, and then, um, the other issue was, uh, when would you then, when would be the, when would the Chair and the Chair, the Vice Chair be appointed? And would that be in June or August? So right now, the way it's written, I do have June. But if someone thinks it should go back to August and, uh, conversation went back and forth a couple of times, uh, their last committee meeting. So it's, it's really up to the, um, the, uh, the you, the committee to make a final determination. But this does contain the language that came from, uh, policy, from the policy, it's Policy eighty-one hundred, but from two thousand nineteen.
Yeah, and in terms of, um, you know, the student board member, um, I, I, I'm all for, you know, getting everything done in June. That way, you know, we have the summer, the Chair Vice Chair gets a summer to really, um, start thinking of the work plan for the committee and things like that and now rushing it. Um, my only thing is, you know, what language could we put in place? Um, in terms of having the chair or vice chair be cognizant of reaching out um to this. Um, new board member. I know their their term officially starts July first. Um, and so I don't know, you know, what the language could say regarding that about reaching out, what communities they would like to serve or. Since the policy says they could serve in any, if they come on the board, they just choose once they arrive. I don't know.
So you're such, are you asking like, is there possibly we could have language that would say something to the effect that the board chair would? That like, say in June, reach out once we know who the student board member is gonna be, reach out to the student board member. Prior to making a final decision about who's gonna be on what committee and just ask that student board member.
Right, right. Something along those lines.
Mr. Chair, could that question be asked as a part of the uh process when the student board mem- student board members are running? Could that be a part of the questionnaire? What policy, if elected, what uh uh committees would you like to sit on?
I think, I mean, the student board member, I think, is already elected prior to the start of June. Um, and so maybe it could just really be, um, the board office reaches out to. I I I'm not sure. I think it'd be um Department of Student Services or the CEO who already knows the name by that point. Um, to ask for the information, the student, to ask them which committee they would like to serve. Um, and it could really be something just like that. Because the student board member elect, you know, you already know the name by the start of June. And so the process could really happen in June. Um, is just, I don't know if we want to include verbiage. Um, I would feel comfortable including verbiage because you could never want to just.
You want to recognize Pam, uh, Chair?
Miss Boozer Struthers, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's all right. Thank you. Uh, I was actually going to address that as well, that I was thinking there was some language around that. In June that the Chair, not the Board and the Student Board Member Elect. Um, you know, that it is explicitly stated, knowing that the. The, you know, the that student seat starts on July one. It didn't seem like that should be any barrier to. Having that information for them to get started on July one. So that was just one thing I wanted to. Support because I know we were, we were still sort of, this is a lot like we're, it sounds like we're all getting a little more aligned around that. That before July one is fine. Uh, I was going to ask if the twenty nineteen version. Had, did that, do we no longer say two committees for the student member of the board? Because I seem to remember that was a, that was somewhere in policy at one point in time, but it I. Getting clarity if that actually was removed in twenty nineteen.
Actually, um, now that I'm looking back at this, I see that it says only, you're right, it only says one, no, wait a minute, hold on. It says student board member should serve as a member of the Academic Achievement Committee, but I did read somewhere else. I'm gonna have to go find that where it said any committee. No, I know what I did. Thank, I'm glad you brought this up. I know what, now I remember, had so many policies the past two weeks that it's like. A blur, but I know what I did because of what, and this is again a discussion point. Because that our student board member, uh, you actually said that you felt like it should be all three committees and that even. Committee because of the fact that that um there could be the possibility of legislation going through again. That would allow um student board members to vote on budget items. And so you felt like we should keep it open just in case there is that possibility that would open up. And that's why I picked that language up. I'm sorry, I didn't identify that as one of the ones we discussed. So you're right, it did not come from previously, it only said one standing committee. Um, and we actually then talked about uh what Eric said, Academic Achievement Committee. But we had talked about also academic achievement and policy and then. Our, our uh Chair, I now she he shared with us that it should be uh all three. So again, that's a discussion item for tonight's meeting on which on what, like, how many. Your pop uh committees would you uh want the student member to have, be able to be a part of?
Yeah, and and I do want to say that, you know, the expansion to serve on all three. Uh, of any of the three, I think, you know, is, I think we are are fine with that. I do think it was like a limited to two and I don't, and I don't know if that's around the uh committee. Membership counts pushing that or time or the, or because there's some, because the time the student spends or. Because historically around the issues of voting on the budget. So the Operations Committee was just not an option, so it was limited to two. So that's, that's all that historical. How we got here. So, but I just wanted to state that I agree that no limitations on the three. But should there be, continue to be, that serving on two is the maximum. That that I guess that's where we are. So I. I will.
I'll agree with you. Um, I was surprised not to see in the policy because when I got my onboarding, um, I was told two as well. Um, to pick two. And so I'm not sure where it explicitly says that. Um, but that that's what I was told when I came on and that's why I picked two. Um, and so, yeah, I mean, I'll, I'm in agreeance. I think it should be um a limit of two committees. Um, just to be cognizant in terms of other board members wanting to join. You know, certain committees but not being able to because, you know, you needed one over here, one over there. Um, so yeah, I agree with the language. Any further comments? Ms. Welsh?
So may I ask a question? So are we looking at language that says any two standing committees? Or just the academic and policy and governance?
I would say any.
Any two. And then I I will go back and change where it says the all the Chair and Vice Chair of each uh uh Committee shall be selected by the Board Chair. Um, in June, I can switch that then to August if if you're in agreement. So that it's all done in August, in June, or or do you, do you all think differently? Just let me know.
I agree with June. Um, does anyone have any objections to June? Okay, so June it is.
Okay.
Okay, colleagues, any other, any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, Ms. Welsh. Uh, if we can move this forward on whatever path it needs to take next. For taking action.
Um, so i- is it something that you would like to bring back further for discussion? As I make the final changes on what we discussed tonight, or I can uh move through the review process. I can't guarantee it'll be ready for action, but I can do that. So you just let me know.
This, would anyone like further discussion? I guess not.
Okay.
I do, I would just like to ask for a a version that's easier to read. Like if you, like a version that looks final, I'm just having some trouble with this current version following everything, if that would be possible.
So what I could do is, um, I could provide both the, with the track changes and then I could provide a cleaned up version for you. Just so it would be easier to read uh that I do in always provide the track changes through these committee meetings. Only so the public can see what changes we have made.
Yeah.
Compared previously, but for final decision making, it might be easier than to see the fi- see the clean version.
Yeah, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alrighty, next policy, Board Bylaw ninety three sixteen, Meetings of the Board. Ms. Welsh, leave it to you again.
Okay, so I am basically um going to attempt to identify the changes that Mr. Newsom. Had uh talked about at the last meeting. I did make one change, which is what uh Mr. Whitley had recommended. When I was talking about annual meetings because we have inconsistency in the law. Where one law says, um, there'll be the annual meeting on the first uh Monday of December. And in that me- and that at that meeting, you'll vote for the Chair and the Co-Chair of the Board of Education. But that, but then we had a new law that was recently passed that talks about the fact that. The uh Chair and the Co-Chair will be uh voted on by the Board. Uh, and that term of office will be for two years. So there's definitely a little bit of confusion in the law. So uh Mr. Whitley had recommended that uh instead of saying the annual meeting. That will be held on the first Monday of December. I read the bi-annual meeting done that will be held on the first uh Monday of December. For the purpose of um I uh voting for a Chair and a Co-Chair or a Vice Chair. Um, the other change is that um um Mr. Newsom, and I did call him. Just make sure I I had everything was, is that he did include language that said that the closed session meetings. Uh, may be recorder, recorded in order to ensure accuracy of the written minutes. But said recording shall be treated as confidential. So that's yes, that's in the definitions right here. He uh he added that change, which there was a discussion at the last meeting about that. And then. We can find the next one. He, under special meetings, he talked about instead of um. Um, having like uh seven members or whatever that it that you would have. Because in another year, you're gonna have ten members. So he just added the language, at least half of the board members. Would be voting to have a uh uh when there was a request to have a special meeting. That it as long as you've got agreement on at least half of the board members for that meeting. Um, then they would have, and it would have to be at least seventy two hours in advance of the uh of the meeting. Um, and then the, there would be, um, they would, they would discuss prior. Because I think this is what you had brought up, or remember Boozer Strutter, about the fact that sometimes when you get into a me- a meeting. Uh, you get into a special meeting, you don't even know what the special meeting is about. And then all, once you're being asked to have an action. When you haven't had a chance to really consider it. So he did say um. They, um, if the this meeting is for discussion, the topic of discussions must be cited. If the meeting is to progress, propose action, the proposed action must be cited. Um, or air no business shall be transacted at said meeting, except except for what, which the meeting is called. So he he's basically saying there needs to be clarification in the notice uh for the special meeting. Uh, what to determine, to basically clarify, is it for discussion or is it to actually propose an action? So that that was another change that he put in. And then he also put in on the same page that relate to emergency meetings that. Instead again of the seven people, that it would be a a a written request of at least half of the board members. So that since we'll be going back to ten. And previously it said seventy two hours for an emergency meeting and he changed that to twenty four, twenty four hours. Um, and then incorporated some of the very same language that he had in the special meeting as far as uh per uh whether it's an action or a discussion item. And the reason he did change it to twenty four hours is because the emergency items are really uh meant to be only items. That they truly are emergencies that need to be, um, it says a meeting that is scheduled to address an item that cannot wait until the next regularly scheduled. Regular business meeting. So as something that the board uh either need to discuss or make a decision about. So he did, that's why he changed it twenty four hours, because something could come up that needed to, uh, you need to act upon that quickly. And then, let me see if I can find. Oh, he also said that for if it turns out that the board meeting is not gonna be um in person. And said it's gonna be virtual. He added that at least one week's notice is required to change an in-person board meeting to a virtual board meeting. So he added that language. I think that might be all the language that he added. Just double check. Yes, I think that's it. And I did have one question because I noticed that still was sitting here in the um, in the policy has language about. As of December two second twenty twenty four, no motion or resolution may be declared adopted without the concurrence of six voting board members. I I had thought there we had a discussion previously that talked about possibly removing that language at this point. Because it could be confusing because of the date and I don't, I don't know if we decided anything on that or not. But I just want to double check before finalizing that. It has to do with the new bill that got passed for when uh we, when uh December second twenty twenty four, we now have, you'll you'll have ten elected board members. Had made notices, I went through our minutes, I did not find anything about it. So um, I think it's further down. If you keep, keep going. Is it, it should start off with a um. Keep going, Cindy. Uh, is it this one? Keep going. Keep forward, yes. Uh, no, that's not it, because that one we had already agreed upon, keep going. Uh, here it is, right there. As of December second twenty twenty four, no motion or resolution, and that I um. So no motion or resolution may be declared adopted without the concurrence of six voting members. And I don't, I don't know. And this might be something that um Mr. Whitley would want to weigh in on. Um, you know, as the Board's Attorney. So.
So. I guess I'll go Mr. Whitley then, Ms. Merkin.
I don't remember us having this conversation at the last board meeting. But my knee jerk reaction is that. It's probably okay because it does align with when the board would go to. A ten-member all-elected board. And it seems to be uh consistent with what the policy would be at that point in time.
Perfect. I just wanted to double check because I don't want to miss anything.
And I just want to make sure the board, uh, did the board have any questions or any concerns?
I think board member uh uh or Chair, uh, yes. Or Mickens Murray, I thought you had a question.
Well, I, it's not so much a question, it's a concern, like everything else in a bureaucratic society. If that date slips. For our folks in Annapolis. Then would we be wedded to six, even though we may still have fourteen members? I don't know. I'm, I, when I had the conversation with uh with Mr. Newsom, my concern was. Policies should reflect the way you are and then who you need to change and you do it. But, you know. I don't want to create confusion.
My only concern is that if everything goes as uh scheduled. Uh, then that somebody would have to change the policy uh before that point in time. Or they would still be requiring seven votes for a ten-member board. Um, uh, again, I work for the board, it would be my recommendation that we be prepared for a a ten-member board. And uh uh if something were to happen, we can change it as opposed to having requiring seven votes.
I'm fine, I can accept that. I just wanted to make sure we had a conversation and it's recorded someplace. Thank you.
No, no other board members have any questions or concerns?
Thank you. I actually was gonna say something similar to Board Chair Mickens Murray that. This process in Annapolis is playing out this session and there's a bunch of recommendations. And they may turn into one or multiple bills. And I think they want to get it done this session, which gives us time. I mean, we could wait until the end of the session uh before we finalize this document or not. But, you know, even the question of a, you know, I think that a two-year term of chair, I think. One-year terms are typically tip, you know, there's typically one-year terms, this rotating shared leadership model that. They may come back with, you know, I I just don't think this is over. And I, I understand Chairman McIs Murray's concern, but I do think we would have time to. Fix that one. But I I understand where you are, uh, Mr. Whitley, around that we've got to show. We've got to show that we're listening to Annapolis, you know, Annapolis is s- said something and we need to reflect it. So. Um, I I agree with you on on that point. But I do think we're gonna see some modifications come out of the, whatever happened. But I do think we're gonna see some modifications come out of the whatever happens that this document will change. But I don't, I think there's so so much important uh operating information in here that we should keep moving. The one that I noted and I apologize if this didn't stand out to me. Last time we discussed it was the the that there isn't a provision for weather-related uh change from an in-person meeting to a uh online meeting. Like right now, there has to be a one-week notice if we're changing from in-person to online. And does seem to me that this technology, the good use of it is that if we have a snowstorm, the board can still meet by Zoom. We don't have to stop our business. But I leave, you know, bring that up for discussion uh right now. See what folks think of that.
Does anyone have any comments, colleagues? Mr. Fields and Mrs. Mickens Murray.
I would uh concur with uh board member Boozer Struther on that issue of weather. Um because I think it's so unpredictable these days that you need to have some provision in there. Um so that we're clear about what the scenario is uh in case of inclement weather or an emergency.
Mrs. Mickens Murray?
Okay, my only thought was uh power outage is, I don't know if you need a caveat in the policy for that. But uh the board need needs to recognize that even though you may have the mechanism to do it. It might not be powered every household. So that's my only thought.
All right. I do want to ask, Mrs. Mrs. Frazier.
I was just gonna re- respond that uh I that definitely would be a consideration. So maybe it's May that we may that, you know, that we may do that. In that way, it can be evaluated for those exact reasons of full participation. And and of course, uh the administration's participation. You know, so I I guess it would be leaving open that that we have the possibility to do it for um with the board or other emergencies that prevent prevent us from meeting in person.
So with the board want to.
And scares, pandemics, you know, hopefully not. Um so I would like to see it.
So would the board like to go from a week to some other time period, forty-eight hours, seventy-two hours?
The the week needs to stay because I think that's that's different. I think that's when we recognize some of the issues that we realized around calendars. So I think that needs to stay. I think it's this additional line around that we may choose, you know, to ho- hold the meeting online due to weather, health, or other emergencies. That kind of line. That's what I that's what I'm thinking.
So like an exception language that says in a situation of inclement weather, the board may without the the whole week's notice, I can put some language in there, you know, put something in there that would give a little bit of leeway there if it's inclement weather. But but I'm thinking, so the thing is, is I guess the other question would be twenty-four or forty-eight hours. Um um our our weather so is crazy around here that they can it can be predicting one thing. And within, you know, few hours, the whole weather ended totally different than what they predicted. So I what would be the the choice here in terms of how what would be the the limit as far as when they could do it?
Hi, Mr. Fields.
In forty-eight hours.
Okay.
I mean, I think I think weather predictability has gotten really pretty good these days. And so you have a pretty good indication, you know, within two days of what the forecast looks like.
Okay. Colleagues, any? I do have to want to acknowledge Dr. Harris. I see he's joined our meeting. Um so Dr. Harris, I see your hands up.
Hey, everyone. Just one question. If we're talking about language within the policy, should we also outline um who gives the final call on that?
I'm guessing it would be the Chair of the Board.
I I figured, but I didn't know if you.
Just to point out, the language does say here that that a majority of board members, what says a bar, the majority of board members or the chair may change an in-person board meeting to a virtual board meeting.
Well, thank you for bringing that up. Alrighty. Okay, any further discussion in terms of the policy? Okay.
Mr. Chair, this one may want to bring back for a discussion item, especially considering we're thinking that Annapolis may have some changes that need to be implemented.
Right, yeah, Ms. Welsh. Um if we could bring this back as a discussion item.
Okay.
So. Yeah. Moving on. Thank you, colleagues. Alrighty. Four point four, policy fifty-one twenty-two, interscholastic and extracurricular activities. Ms. Welsh.
Okay, um so um we had, we did have, uh this was back in November, I think. We had Shirley Diggs, who is the coordinating supervisor for extracurricular. I mean, for interscholastic athletics and also George McClure, who's the supervisor for scholastic athletics. Come and talk about the problems that they the high schools were encountering with an attempt to implement. The policy had been put into place, I want to say, uh back in twenty-one, I think. And so um there was a request to consider making revisions and basically move the policy back to what previous, what the p- policy previously had been. So just to give a quick recap, the current policy talks about the fact that a student could play on on um in interscholastic interscholastic athletics um without having a two-point O GPA. They would be put on on a period of probation, at which then they would be required of twenty days. They'd be required to do all this extra um uh coach, they'd get extra coaching and extra classwork and all this kind of stuff to try to help bring their grades up. Um and actually, Miss uh when Miss um when Miss Diggs came and explained it. It turns out that even the even the practicality of providing something at the end of the day actually would then take away from the student's ability to even practice. And the language in the policy talked about the fact that they could attend practices, they just couldn't play at games. Um and so the whole process, it just seemed to keep running into itself uh in terms of being able to do it. And so in our last discussion, I think the committee members were inclined to go back to much of the language from the previous policy where we talk about the fact that a two-point O GPA is a an actual academic requirement for students in interscholastic athletics. So I I wanna um so that change did occur and I'm going to take you through that, but I want to point something else out. You, we actually had this as academic eligibility also for extracurricular activities. But we talk about, if you read the definition of extracurricular activities, it says um approved before and after school activities that are for academic enrichment or promote service to the community excluding interscholastic athletics. So it sort of seems a little ridiculous to have an academic eligibility for something that we want students to be a part of. Um that where students can actually participate because it's to really enrich their education. So they should have the opportunity to be a part of all these, you know, could be clubs, different activities, whatever that they and it could it could be quite important to many of them because it might be an area of interest that they really have an interest in and they feel a part of. And that might help them better connect even with the school, uh you know, in terms of their education. So what I did was I broke the policy out and certainly we can make any changes. But I broke and I also looked at some other school systems and what they had also done. And we have several systems out there that did not put academic eligibility for extracurricular activities. So I broke it out and I said for the policy statement that that yes, uh they we recognize, you know, the athletics are important. But that they still have, they have a responsibility in maintaining and that their their academic standing. And but at for the uh for uh extracurricular activities. This board is committed to ensuring that all Prince George's County Public School students have equitable access to educational programs and school-related activities. Um and that the board believes that access to participation in extracurricular activities engages students' interests and ability and is an important part of students' overall educational experience. So I incorporated that. And then as you move through the policy and you get to the standards where I think you are right there, that's perfect. It is pretty simple policy. It just lays out that for um and and the other thing I added was middle school. Because I believe Board Member Boozer Struther, you had requested, isn't there a possibility that we could also have have that academic eligibility requirement of two-point O for middle school athletics? Um and so I did um I did go ahead and incorporate that also into this policy. So it does say middle and high school students must earn an overall quarter grade point average GPA of at least a two-point O in order to participate in in scholastic athletics. And then I also did um um talk about the fact that the pre- our current policy says that if if you enter ninth grade, you forget, if you don't meet it when you're entering, then you can't participate. But I went back to the old language and we did have a co- conversation about this, the last uh at that committee meeting when we did discuss extra or interscholastic athletics. I did say students matriculating matriculating to ninth grade are exempt from the high school interscholastic athletic eligibility requirement until the first grading period. And then that the eligibility would kick in at that point in time. Um and so and I did also add some language about students with IEPs and five oh fours having the opportunity to participate in um interscholastic athletics. Then for the actual actual crick extracurricular activities. Um I um the previous language had been, it's the expectation of the board that every school provides for students with the opportu- the opportunity for participation in a diverse range of extracurricular activities. I added also though, and you got, if you'll scroll down, Cindy, I can, you can, they can see it right on the screen under extra, keep going, under extracurricular activities. I have here, the stu- the student, the principal or designated will provide and communicate opportunities for all students to participate in extracurricular activities by uh ensuring that there is a total program of extracurricular activities in the school that is comprehensive while balanced, providing many and varied opportunities for all students. And then I did also include language saying that all students may participate in extracurricular uh activities regardless of race, color, and all the different protected classes. So I did and I did take the liberty to add that language only because and it goes back to your original definition of extracurricular activities and ensuring that they have the opportunity to enrich their education. So um this is a good one to talk about and get your input on what your thoughts are about the policy.
No, thank you, Ms. Welsh. Um I truly appreciate you making the difference. Uh I think that's a really good point. Uh that we definitely want kids to get involved when it comes to um organizations and clubs um that foster, I guess, unity or, you know, they may find a new trait that they really love and may make new friends. Um and this may bolster their academic experience. And I think this is something that um also Ms. Diggs brought up. You know, why not have a distinction between athletics, between clubs, you know, they are two very different things. And so um I appreciate um this language. So I'll start with Ms. Boozer Strutter than Mr. Fields.
I thank you so much. Um uh to piggyback on that, I I did just uh search for older versions of this to understand why extracurricular is part of it. Um I still not very clear on how they got combined. But I will say, the twenty-eleven of the twenty-eleven version totally separated out the two-point O being uh the uh interscholastic athletics had a totally separate section on extracurricular activities, no reference to great GPA. And directed, the Board of Education directs the superintendent to develop extracurricular activity guidelines. So they were somehow we merged them some point in time. So I I agree, that needs to be very clear that the the two-point O. And maybe this is a chance to even think about these policies being this way. Maybe there is another policy. But maybe not for today. But uh the other one is middle middle school already operates under, you know, it the administratively, the students are informed to keep a two-point O. I'd have to review the administrative procedure around that. But of course, I mean, I guess that, you know, in terms of um Maryland uh competition rules. I guess it's changes once you're in ninth grade in high school. So and you know, again, I since we have a couple of new members, I want to, I had an experience of trying the new policy with a couple of students helping their them and their parents. And it 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 didn't work. And I tried it in two settings, tried to use it. We didn't have the AP. I went back to the policy. It it I think it's right that administration came back to us on this one. And I'm I'm glad we're addressing it and support the changes. Thank you.
Mr. Field.
I have real mixed emotions on this. Um as a former student athlete and as a father of a student athlete, uh who went on to college as a student athlete. There is a deleted statement from the policy statement uh paragraph that said, research shows that students participating in interscholastic athletic programs and extracurricular activities have higher academic achievement, including graduation rates and grade point averages. And that's a very true statement. Um and I think that um I have always looked at athletics as academic enhancement also. Um I think students who participate do better. And I think when you look at extracurricular activities, whether it's drama club or let's say an environmental club. Even if we don't require a minimum GPA, I think something needs to be said that we encourage those students to maintain high academic standards. Because I would hate it to be felt like as an athlete, I'm being required to hold this academic standard. But if you join a club, you're not. We're all students and we're all taking on these responsibilities. Um and I know in my daughter's experience, it helped tremendously uh that that requirement was placed upon her and other athletes, that they had to achieve that GPA. When you go to college, it's the same way. And I don't diminish extracurricular activities and separate them because I think in terms of student time and effort. They can be a lot alike, whether it's an extracurricular activity or an athletic team. So that's my, that's my only hesitation. Um you know, I I hear you in terms of the difference. But in terms of what the expectations we place upon our students, I think should be the same.
Mr. Riggs.
Thanks for recognizing me. Um for for me, and and I want to be quite honest, I haven't had a lot of time to read this. And so that's something I'm gonna get better at. Um and I'm tempering myself from asking lots of questions because that's probably my inclination right now. But what I do want to say is I think around the equity piece of this all. Um this feels a bit like a carrot and stick situation where, you know, we're incentivizing students with the athletics. But then if they aren't meeting expectations, they're being dissensivized. And I think that um from the equity end of it, you know, students who may have circumstances like a death in the family or are dealing with homelessness or other kind of factors that are outside of their control, I just want to make sure that they're not being punished because they didn't get a two-point O and they may have valid reasons as to why they didn't happen. So I would really kind of urge us in the policies to kind of consider um ways that we can craft some language that of course still holds a high standard for students to participate in these clubs, but at the same time doesn't punish them. Um I think particularly for students who, um this is an outlet. This is an opportunity for them to, you know, engage and have that balance. And you know, if it was something that happened in their life that they can't control, um I just wouldn't want them to be punished for that. So that's something that I I can probably look through the policy and figure out where and what part I would make that suggestion. But um that's just something that stood out to me.
Ms. Boozer Strutter.
Thanks. Yeah, I think Mr. Briggs is getting at, you know, this difference between extracurricular activity and athletics. Because Maryland State has the law, the two-point O law. And this is not, it is very difficult for our high school principals and athletic directors when we run in, when they run into this. It we, a team can be made ineligible and lose, the full team loses. We, a team can be made ineligible and lose, the full team loses um. Benefits of that, like going on to state championships, so there's, there, there's a big difference there. So um, I, I would encourage conversation, maybe direct conversations with the C E O to dive, to dive deeper. Um, into that, if you, you know, want to understand it better, or, or the uh, or our director, directors of athletics. But I think that Mr. Briggs is getting to, maybe there's something separate that extracurricular activities. Is a separate discussion around the fact that some of these extracurricular activities are meant to help rate, to, to help. With academic achievement, that's, you know, the, the point of them, so if you fall below a two point O, again, that doesn't make any sense. If this is, if the activity was meant to, to help you, uh, you know, be enriched for that. And there are, um, you know, I'm sure every high school is different, but you know, they, all of them. I think all of them have the after school um, uh, study halls. There's definitely, um, you know, the academic program built in, I believe for our, uh, the athletic team, so. But that's something else that would have to be, I think, might be in our former meeting recorded, explaining all of that, but there are. There are, there is the access to the resources, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Welsh.
I was just wondering if it might be helpful for the new board members on the committee if um, Cindy sent them the, um, or I think she has a copy. If not, I, I think I could find a copy of the presentation that uh, Ms. Diggs had uh, had provided. Cause that might give a little bit more information about what they were running into when they were at the school level. Cause I, I, yeah, it's an important thing to consider, I don't know, I'm just throwing that out as a suggestion.
Right, and Mr. Fields.
No, I, I'd appreciate that, and, and I, and I do understand, I do understand the difference, I guess. I guess my point is the expectation that we place upon students. That we're placing expectation upon student athletes to hit a certain GPA. But for extracurriculars, which I understand are different, there is no reference to encouraging their academic performance. So I would hate for a student to feel as though, if I join this club, I don't really have to, you know, worry about my grades. Because, you know, there's no requirement upon me to perform. And so perhaps this speaks to the need for, to really divest this policy. That there should perhaps be two, one for athletics and one for extracurricular activities. The other point that I, I meant to bring up is that under extracurricular activities, under B three. We say all students may participate in extracurricular activities regardless of race, color, national origin and so forth. Think that state, same statement needs to be placed for athletics, um, and also for athletics. And I don't, this is a, a very sensitive subject, but about gender identity. So um, is it, is it self-selection in terms of gender identity? And athletics, um, because I think that is a bridge that you may cross one day. That you may have a transgendered student who would like to play on the team that they identify with their gender. And. The statement that is supposed to be all inclusive, might not be all inclusive. That's just my thoughts.
I appreciate that, Ms. McInnes Murray, and then I'll add my comments.
Okay, uh, my thought is, I personally believe the two point O standard should be for both groups. So what I was gonna ask on this Welsh, what's the downside for the extracurricular activities? For it not to be two point O, cause I don't remember, I guess from the presentation, that, that they made a case for that.
No, they, they, they were more focused on the um, on the extracurricular, on the um.
So maybe it's a matter of just asking the question when you go back to.
Madam Chair, uh, if you're in the math club and you don't have a two point O, I, I think it might help. That you be allowed to participate in the math club, even though you don't have a two point O.
But let me offer this, in this new age of providing equity, I think we should start the mindset. Of giving a child what they need, if they need additional assistance to have them to reach that two point O. Then I believe we should do that, so I, I still would recommend that, uh, Ms. Welsh go back and ask the question. Because we need to look at this providing equity for all children, which means you shouldn't be really making a difference. Uh, I think with Mr. Briggs, it's not wrong, Mr. Fields, but I, I, I think strongly that, um, that we should. Uh, continue the discussion around that, thanks.
Right, Ms. Boozer Strutter.
Uh, yeah, just following up with Mr. Fields, um, and also this consistency of that, of that. Uh, non-discrimination language, I, I think we're, we still need to get it down like the same everywhere. Um, and places where, because already it's that same one that we already noted, you know, isn't quite up to. Even our own language of our administrative procedure on transgender and gender non-conforming students, and I did just want to. Um, note to my colleagues, administrative procedure fifty one eighty three. Uh, G, physical education classes in intramural and interscholastic athletics. Um, addresses, addresses uh, gender identity. In physical education and intermural sports and, and then the interscholastics athletics, the M P S S A Association Guidelines. So we, we do have an A P that, um, I wanted to make sure you knew, knew about. Uh, that was adopted April twelfth, twenty twenty one, fifty one eighty three.
Thank you, Ms. Welsh.
Well, and I was also going to bring up the same thing that you actually have a sitting in your policy for, um, yeah, um. Uh, what is the number on that one, it is a zero one zero three inclusive environment for L G B T Q I plus people. And, and it addresses the fact that absolutely, um, the, uh, whether, you know, any gender diverse student. Can absolutely participate in interscholastic athletics, so we, you already have that sitting in your policy. And the protected classes, just so you know, I did pick that up out of, I want to say zero one two five. If I remember that, that was which policy, that po- policy, which is an anti-discrimination, um, one of your anti-discrimination policies. Um, I do want to say one thing about extracurricular activities, if you're looking at the wide range of extracurricular activities and being able to provide additional. Resources uh, to those students who can't make the two point O. Um, and I don't know if you're saying the same thing, then are we going back to, are you saying the same thing for athletics? That if they can't make the two point O, we're going to be providing um, additional resources because um. Um, I know they already have student advisors for the athletics, but for extracurricular activities. I think with, with, when you think about how high school operates and the many different activities that do exist, they do have different types of resources. And interventions available to students, but if you're specifying just for the, additionally for those students. Who want to participate in an af- in a, an extracurricular activity and then are not allowed because they don't have the two point O. I think another thing to consider would be budget, because I think the high schools, they are using the staffing they have at this point. And to be adding anything additional in terms of uh, interventions and supports and things like that. Could uh, possibly lead into additional staffing, just be provide that service.
Thank, so uh, I guess, Ms. Welsh, I do ask that, um, Mr. Fields, Ms. Boozer Strutter's. Um, comment about the protected classes be put on top as well for interscholastic activity. Um, we copy and paste that language.
I'll be glad to.
And then um, in terms of the two point O requirement, um. I do believe in having the two point O requirement for athletics, because you know, we have that state requirement. And you know, the benefits in terms of teams being able to move on, um, for extracurricular activities, I don't want to put a GPA just because. Like you mentioned, there is a wide range of, you know, clubs are made before after school and some of them, you know, maybe um. To support students who go below two point O GPA, and so you know, is that then preventing them from being a part of. A club that was supposed to help them um, do better in their education, you know, and so just because there could be such. A different amount of different types of clubs, you know, ones that could really help students, um, I would refrain, I think, from putting that requirement. Um, and so. I will ask, um, board members, would you like to, oh, Ms. Welsh?
Well, one question, if, if in fact you, if the committee decides that you're not going to put the requirement for the extracurricular activities. Then is it, would you want to follow up on the recommendation to actually separate the two policies? And have one that talks about interscholastic, interscholastic athletics, and then one policy that talks about extracurricular activities.
Um, I believe both policies can sit together, um, I think we have them separated enough. Uh, within the policy as it stands, where you know, you're able to interpret what falls into athletics, what falls into clubs. Um, and so I saw your hand, Ms. Boozer Strutter.
Well. I guess they're feeling really different to me now, um, I, I, even looking back at the previous versions, I don't understand why they were put together. Like even looking back at twenty eleven, eleven, it looks so like, oh, yeah, and. Uh, let's just throw in extracurriculars but not have a GPA, I don't know, you know, where, where we're headed and I, and I. And I'm hearing some really great things here, like, you know, Mr. Fields, how you're saying, like, are, what are we saying about extracurriculars? Are we, are we defining the, the value, the expectations? You know, the, you know, high performing schools and the extracurriculars they offer, do we have a standard of like? You know, high schools should be offering X, you know, right now. You know, it's, it's by building, like, do we have a minimum standard of what's accessible to our high school students and middle school stu- students? For extracurriculars, like, you know, some of us are talking about, you know, the, you know, the, you know, debate teams coming back. You know, uh, across the system in a more systemic way that maybe there's more here than we have. We haven't even discussed because we've really been talking about the athletes through this con- most of this conversation that we've been having for. Which went on for all of twenty twenty one, there's lots of Youtubes if you want to hear the board discuss this, um. So I, I throw that out there, I, I just think we're having a really good discussion here about that we haven't really. Dive, there isn't a policy around what we expect P G C P S to provide our. Let's just say middle and high school students, um, around extracurriculars.
Ms. McInnes Murray, then.
Okay, I guess what I hear you guys saying is that in all high schools, they may be doing something differently with the extracurricular activity. And what I am saying is that I guess the, the staff that came to talk to us, it was focused on the, um, the, um. Athletics, maybe we should choose maybe, how many high schools do we have twenty twenty two? Maybe we should have four people come from a high school to tell us, show us what that difference is. Because I don't understand personally why they, there cannot be a scholastic requirement. So I, I need to hear that, or they can send me something, let me read it, I don't know, I just need to know why that standard does not exist. And why we, some of us believe that it shouldn't, that's not what I'm hearing in this meeting right now, I am hearing that there should be a standard. So I need to hear from the folks, I guess, in the building, at least one, two or three of them, since we have twenty two schools. I'm only choosing five different areas, or three from different areas to help explain it away, thanks.
Mr. Briggs.
Yeah, thanks for recognizing me, I think, um, I was really thinking about this and I was having a hard time understanding why. I would take a student off of a debate team or art club or in athletics because they don't have a two point O. Um, versus it sounds like what's already in the language is that there are some type of wraparound supports. Or interventions for the students, and I think that that probably fits better with what I think is ultimately the goal, which is to support them along the path. To the academic, through the academic process, um, maybe they can't play in the sport, maybe they, you know, can go to the debate discussion, but they can't participate in like any of the. Regional debates or whatever, um, but I just feel like I don't really understand the purpose of taking the, the kid off of it, and then I think the other thing is. I partly don't understand the, well, I'm not gonna say don't understand, I don't think that it, it wouldn't necessarily make sense for. The um, the extracurricular and the interscholastic to be split, simply because I think that. You know, if the argument, it just depends on what the argument is, if it's saying for the athletics, you know, hey, this is really taking you away from the academics. The same could be said for debate, or the same could be said for art club, or the same could be said for, you know, choir, right? And so I think that we're gonna split the interscholastic piece, then it's almost like there are different groups within that. That kind of fits more with the athletics, and so maybe just having that kind of, that standard, um, may fit a little bit more. Um, but I guess I just, I couldn't answer the question for myself, and I'm posing it to the group as to why I would take a kid off of any of those things. If they don't have a two point O versus supporting them and having interventions in place.
Right, and you know, I wouldn't want to define, I guess, uh, a GPA requirement for clubs in terms of our policy. Um, you know, that would affect all types of clubs regardless, you know, as long as they're in our school system. It would affect all clubs, when currently, a lot of the current clubs that are in schools like National Honor Society, S G A. Even some debate teams do have their own um, GPA requirements for members to join their clubs. Um, and so you know, have, you know, giving them that leeway to decide, um, if they want to have a GPA requirement. Um, I think is the better route because you, we, you know, this is what I was saying before, you know, we have different types of clubs, you know. Like you mentioned in art club, um, you know, I wouldn't see a GPA requirement for that, but you know, something like, um, I don't know, like, like an honor society. You know, I would see a GPA requirement for that.
Right.
Uh, but having to define that, I think is so tricky with such a wide range of clubs that there are, um, so. Mr. Fields.
Um. You know, I, I go back to they're all, everyone's a student, and that extracurricular activities and. Uh, athletics are not required for a school system to provide, right? They are, they are extras that we provide to enhance the student experience. But enhancing the student experience, I don't think we want to diminish the reason why students are there in the first place. And that's to get a solid education and to perform well. Um, in my high school, we had a requirement for extracurricular activities. I was a student government, if you, if you had below, I think it was a two, three, you couldn't participate, you couldn't participate, I think, in any of our activities. Because, and they made clear that these activities would help enhance your academics, but they didn't want to be in a position of saying. Even so, we're going to allow you to participate even though your academics don't meet the standard. Because I think they were trying to instill in us this notion that whether it's a club or a sport. You represent this school and this district, and in this district, we expect high academic performance, did it leave some students out? Absolutely, but those students were encouraged to get the help to pull their academics up, because when we think about a two point O. That is a minimum threshold of a GPA, like i- if, if you're not above a two point O. You're really struggling either as an athlete or as a student in a club or activity. And I think if we're going to talk about this issue of academic achievement in this school district. Then we have to set the tone of what our expectation is for all students, that when you walk through the door, we don't differentiate. If you're on the basketball team or the debate club, you're all students and we hold you to high standards. And so, even if you don't want to include a GPA for extracurricular activities. There has to be a statement in there about students upholding high academic standards if you participate in extracurricular activities. Because if not, you're leaving the door open for a lot of students who might not be mature enough to say. Hey, my, my GPA is on the margins, but you know, I can still join the art club, so I'm not going to work hard because I know no one's ever going to question me. About my GPA, because it's not a requirement, whereas the athlete is sweating it out. Because if I don't get that two point O or better, it's going to jeopardize not only my play, but it could perhaps jeopardize the team. In terms of their success for the season, so that's just my, uh, this is one issue you will find. That I am very um, passionate about, because I think this. This environment of low expectations has crept into public schools. This environment of low expectations has crept into public schools to the point that we. We don't give our students enough credit that they have the ability. To achieve something as a minimum threshold of a two point O GPA. And I and I think if we're going to move this district forward and raise our standards for our students. We have to start in every corner of student life, athletics, extracurricular activities. Whatever it is, we always have to hold everyone to a high standard.
Mr. Briggs and we'll move forward.
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to, I just wanted to add in again, I think it's really important for the policy that we understand what the basis is, because I think that. If this is meant to offer balance, if this is meant to offer an outlet for students, then I think that's the important piece, which is that. If this is, you know, an escape for you, or some, it's a, it's a mental health opportunity for you. Then I don't want to punish a student for not meeting it, you know, a two point O GPA. I think the number, I think it's okay to have the the GPA. I think that that's fine. I think that could be arbitrary, to be quite honest with you, a two point O at one school could be very different than a two point O at another school. Um and also think that there are other reasons behind why a grade may look a certain way. So I do think that it's important that we just understand the basis behind these. Activities, which is that they're meant to offer balance. They're meant to support students along the way. They're they're meant to be encouragements for the student, but also, I mean, you just never know the impact that that could have, you know, it could have an. Unintended consequence for a student who's pulled from the athletics or from the debate, you know, and we would, we would hope that it would be that they would be more encouraged to, you know, and get involved and engage. But I think the the really the purpose here is to say, what types of supports can we offer students beyond, you know, if we see that they're struggling, you know. Whether that's a student who is working a part-time job and they're falling to two point O, school should have those processes in place to really support those students. And so I just wouldn't want it to be a punishment piece versus, I think, you know, an incentive to continue to participate. And then to really support uh teachers and, you know, other administration. And um really engaging intervening in that students uh, you know, development. Um so I think there's a way that we could craft this where it's not necessarily pulling students from something, but we can say, keep the two point O GPA. Um while also holding, you know, them accountable for meeting a certain threshold and participating.
So, okay, Ms. Mickens Murray.
Yes, yeah, and and I'm recognizing the time and I'm appreciating what you're trying to do. But this is a serious discussion and I'm not saying that we prolong that discussion tonight. But I am saying, I'm suggesting that we have this as a continued discussion at our next meeting. But think in terms of who can provide us additional information. Because we need more information in this room than we, I mean, it on this Zoom, uh than we have at this moment in time. In order to move us beyond where we are. I do not see. Uh a two point O and removing a child from anything is really being a punishment. It should be an incentive to help them to stay on that debate, and I don't think debate teams being down to two point O. Anyway, but maybe it is, but I don't think so. But um. We we need to turn our language around this around as well. So I'm suggesting that you go back to the administration, uh Ms. Welsh. And see who's willing to come talk to us around the um extracurricular activity. Because we've had a lot of discussion around the scholastics, uh the academic, I mean, the athletics.
Right.
I can, oh, I can do that. I can see if I can get someone to come. I might, it might not be at the next meeting, it might be one after that, but I can certainly. Um to speak with Dr. Golson about it.
Thank you. So um yeah, so it's policy um. We'll push it forward for further discussion um at a later meeting when we could get um someone from the school system to bring more insight.
And I and I will send uh the presentation that they did put on for interscholastic athletics over uh over to the new board members too, so they can look at that.
Okay. Thank you. Alrighty, moving on. Four point five, policy zero one twenty two data dashboards. So, back to Ms. Welsh.
So this, with this policy, we haven't discussed before, this is a new, the first time that it came up as a discussion item. And um it is um the revisions that were made to it um. Basically, it is just to, they were made to align with the um strategic plan in terms of the. Uh what the strategic plan uh measures, there is definite language within the way, within the policy statement that. That uh references the um strategic plans language uh in terms of um. Uh providing equity and justice uh for all stakeholders and access for all students for broad ra- array of relevant. Educational opportunities and high quality learning environments. Um so, but uh on top of that, then we, the purpose of the policy is really to provide a transparent and comprehensive. Uh way of monitoring uh how we are doing. So in the, if you look in the strategic plan. They have what's called a critical success indicators, which are um uh linked to each of the um. Uh strategic plan, their outcome goals. And so if um if you go down, um Cindy to the uh keep. Traveling, so just just as looking at the definition for one second. Those critical success indicators are targets that have been established to monitor progress towards achieving the outcome goals established in the strategic plan. And then if you go further down in the policy to the standards. Um, what it does, it talks about annual targets, which are would be the um. The CSI is from the strategic plan and then um it would address each of the outcome goals. So if you. And there are re- corresponding um components. So if then when you think about a dashboard that lists out how. Um each school is doing or different groups of students are doing, however you broke out the data. You would then be, we'd wanna look at in terms of what we set as our goals for the school system. So. There are, if you scroll down, you'll see like others, educational excellence, uh excellence in equity, workforce operational excellence. And then mental health and wellness. So those are the four outcome goals. And then underneath there, uh each one of those, I would just scroll back up a minute, please. Then there are, it's broken out into each of the components so that a dashboard. That you would, that you would be putting out there for the public, um that would provide transparency on how well we are are pro- progressing. Would then be addressing all of these individual areas, the components within each of the out- outcome goals. Um and so then, um so that's the first part of the policy, really just talking about what we'd be measuring. And then if you go down to the second part, if you scroll down Cindy to the data dashboard reporting, continue down a little bit further. And then um it would say uh that the the data would, when it became available, when they're measuring at different times. Then they, and you would have it also just to be clear, an administrative procedure that would grow into much more detail to specifically talk about. Like reporting periods when it would be reporting those types of things, but it would, it lays out. Um that as the data became available, that at appropriate intervals, status reports of progress and how we were attaining each of the CSI's. Would become available through electronic uh reporting modes, so that all stakeholders, uh including, you know, there wouldn't just be. Limited to board members and staff and parents, but anyone who wanted to just get on the website and pull up the information could. Could pull it up and look at it. Um and then um I I we, I did put in language though, because there are definite FERPA. Uh requirements that have to be met uh when you have small, small numbers of students and stuff in terms of reporting data, so therefore. That would be, I wanted to incorporate that so that we're, we are in compliance with that particular law. And then I have, if you'll scroll down, Cindy, I just say that the CEO would be responsible for develop. Developing administrative procedure to implement this policy. So I did share this uh with the um. Um Office of Accountability uh under Chief Strater's uh Division. And had them review it to see if it aligns with like what, in terms of what they are doing when they do uh. Uh and I think uh both Doug Strater and Anthony Whittington came to our Policy and Governance Committee meeting last year. To talk about data dashboards. So I did share that with them to have them review it to see if it. Really did reflect what we, the data we'd be collecting to to really evaluate how well we're doing as a school system. And they, they, they were in agreement with it. So that, that's basically it in a nutshell. It's been updated to reflect what's being measured through the strategic plan.
Thank you, Ms. Welsh. Colleagues, any questions, comments? Okie dokie. Alrighty, seen none. Um I guess, Ms. Welsh, we could move this one forward um for action.
Okay.
Whenever, you know, it's, put it the next meeting.
Um, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
His palm of his hand was up.
Oh, my bad, Ms. Booze Strather.
Yeah, sorry, I was a little slow in hitting my button. I I appreciate it. Um, yeah, I just, I just wanted to note that. This progress towards the strategic plan and the critical success indicators. Moving to a dashboard is just significant, and I just wanna thank administration for um getting us to this point. So I, it's more of a comment than trying to to change this in any way. Thank you.
No, thank you. Okay, moving forward. Alrighty, policy twenty two fourteen, trespass scene warnings.
Yes. Good question. Are we gonna keep it as a discussion item or are we taking action?
We are taking action. Okay, Ms. Welsh, policy twenty two fourteen.
So this uh this policy, this is a um uh really just an updated policy that we had in um. And that, but the last time it was amended was April of two thousand ten. And it uh probably didn't say very much, one little statement basically saying that we would uh. Deny people uh uh access into on the school grounds if they're unauthorized or if they're. If their behavior um is objection objectionable or otherwise undesired and um. Pretty much that, that was what it said, didn't say much more. So what I did was, I did go through and um. Put in some language about um uh the fact that we absolutely do want. Parents and visitors and community members to be part of our schools and, you know, come to visit and be, you know, participate in different kinds of activities. However, there are times when. We absolutely cannot afford to have those pe- certain people on on the school grounds, especially if they have been. Probably the biggest thing that comes to mind is, if you look at the um definition, uh sort of explains it all, under willful disturbance. Uh where it describes the conduct of an individual who willfully disturbs or otherwise willfully prevents the orderly conduct of activities. Administrations or classes at a school. Um unless or threatens with bodily harm, any student, employee, or other individually, individual lawfully on school property, a school bus. Or at a school sponsored event or off um off school property or threatens with bodily harm, any employee at home by any means. Including in person, by telephone, or by electronic means, if the threat arises out of the scope of employ. Of of employment. And so if you look at under the standards, Cindy, if you can just roll under. Uh scroll down to the standards where it talks about um, keep going, that's the definitions, but if you go to um. Uh wait a minute, you're in the wrong policy. I'm sorry, you're in the data dashboard and we're in the uh, no, that's, oh, so the wrong one got posted there. What, see what that is? Oh, trespass warning, there you go. Um so, so if you look at the standards, uh and this, this comes directly out of the law. It says basically that a principal, I mean, I I uh personalized it for our school system, a principal designated administrator. Or a CEO may deny access to Prince George's property to a person who is, first of all. Not a bona fide currently registered student or employee of PG P- PG CPS and doesn't have any lawful business to pursue. At at the school system or at the school. Um is a bona fide currently registered student though, who has been suspended or expelled for a certain period of time and they are not supposed to be on school property. Or as an employee who's been denied access to school property because they've been, as a result of administrative action, so they might have been put on administrative leave. Which will say you are not allowed to enter school property and then creates a willful disturbance, which is the definition that I just provide. Forward. So it is not to prevent people from uh, you know, participating and being part of the educational process, but it is. There to ensure that the educational process proceeds uh without being interrupted or disrupted. And uh making sure that the environment is safe for both students and staff. So. It lays out a when they actually can be denied, the policy does, and then it talks about denial of access letter. And um the um what the letter would uh consist of and who can send it and. Um the fact that the denial can't exceed one calendar year. So if you are saying. You are no longer allowed to be on school property, let's say to an apparent, who maybe became, was very disruptive and violent. And they felt the school felt that it wasn't safe to have the parent on school property. At that point, the length of time could only be for one year. That they would be uh uh denied from coming into the uh school system. And then also, there's anyone who is denied access to can appeal that decision at any point in time. Um and to to the board that, so then that the letter that goes to the person must um. Also just let the person know that they can appeal that, the decision. And then it also talks about the fact that the Board of Education, um and this again is in the law. Shall annually, shall report annually to the Maryland State Primitive Education, the number of student disruptions that occurred in a previous year. Um and so, under implementations, I have that, of course, the CEO is authorized to develop an administrative procedure. Uh to implement the policy. And then I also have that the CEO shall provide the board with an annual report addressing. The number of school system disruptions that occurred the previous year. So that's, that's pretty much that in a nutshell. It's just reflecting what current law says.
Okay, colleagues, floor is open for questions or comments. Uh, Mr. Fields?
Do we define anywhere um public school grounds? I only ask that question because let's say there's a group of parents who are going to protest. Um a matter in a school building and they are in the street. Um that is adjacent to the school building or across the street from the school building. Is there some necessity, and I guess I should ask our board counsel this, for us to define what we mean by public school grounds?
Can I just say one thing? We do have a definition in the policy that talks about uh school property. And if I need to ref- say, I think we have school property throughout the whole uh policy. So I can read it to you. It says, any property owned or leased by Prince George's County Public School used by Prince George's County Public School for school-based activities. The concept of property extends to school activities such as field trips, use of parks and recreation facilities, et cetera. School buses, bus stops, facilities that are scheduled uh by the school system for students. Use or consider it an extension of school property.
Uh so, so board council, does school property extend into the street?
Uh the public square would probably not be school grounds. It would probably uh depend on a case-by-case basis, but if it's these public street. That would typically not be school grounds.
I'll ask that question for, you know, First Amendment purposes in terms of, you know, public protest or demonstration. That we just need to be clear with the public what we're talking about when we talk about trespassing.
Well, that's why I use the word public square. I wanted to make it clear that it was a First Amendment i- i- issue.
Any further discussion? Okay, um colleagues, Ms. Welsh.
I do have one question. So do you think I should be providing a little bit more clarification, clarification in the pow- in the definition?
Mr. Fields, do you think it suffice what you brought up or?
Well, board council just provided suffices. I I just think that if. If the situation ever arose, that we should be prepared to respond likewise. So that the public is clear that we're not infringing upon. Sort of those First Amendment rights that when we talk about trespassing on school property.
Okay. So I think, Mr. Whaley, and I, you can let me know. I think the language could stay as it is.
Yes, I think Ms. Welsh has done a good job of uh trying to uh define school property. You, the, no definition is going to be all inclusive, but I believe the one that she gave. No definition is going to be all inclusive, but I believe the one that she gave is a very good definition, a good working definition.
Okay. Um, so I believe this policy can move forward for action, Ms. Welsh.
Okay, I will send it over for review.
Alrighty. That's it for policies for discussion. Alrighty, five point oh, policies for review or action. All actions taken on policies today are pursuant to Board Policy ninety-three forty, Policy Development, Roman numeral four, paragraph. We have one policy for review or action, and that is a policy on heroin, heroin and opioid education and Community Action Act of twenty seventeen. So colleagues, have a motion to forward the new policy to the full board with a recommendation to seek public comment.
Mr. Chair, have the new board members been made aware or briefed on this policy?
I was going to have Ms. Welsh brief during discussion.
Okay.
So. I don't know.
This, uh, Chair, I move to forward the new policy here in opioid education and community action act of twenty seventeen to the full board with a recommendation to seek public comment.
All right, it has been properly moved in second. I'll now yield the floor to Ms. Welsh for an overview.
Okay, um, so this policy, it's it's based on a law that was passed passed back in two thousand and seventeen, actually. And it is in accordance with Education Article seven dash four twenty-six point five, which does require the school system to have a process in place so that you, we can administer overdosing medication to students and other persons on school property who we reasonably believe to be experiencing opioid overdose. It also goes into place, and again, these are all legal requirements that we have state safe storage of the medication in school health rooms and that there's training and certification of the school health, school-based health professionals and any other identified individuals that we are going to provide training to. And that we have a plan for educating the students and staff on science and symptoms of opioid overdose and the reporting of a suspected overdose. And that we also annually notify parents that this is that the medication is available in each school and that we, if we felt like there was a reasonable, that was reasonable to think that, like, say, a student was overdosing that our school nurse would be probably administering that medication to save the person. And then there's, it also addresses having a plan in place for collaborating collaborating with the Prince George's County Health Department and educating the community about overdose, dose, dose-related emergencies. There's also a provision in it that talks about if the person, if let's say your school nurse is operating in in good faith and honestly believes that they're the person that they are administering the medication is overdosing, that they should not be held personally liable for any act of omission. So it sort of hits all those areas and it is driven by the law. And at the last meeting, there were several questions and I wanted to provide those answers. One of the questions had to do with how does the training work? And the training is actually virtual. The health department provides it to all of our, it was our our school nurses. And we did get some of the athletic directors trained also, and it was a virtual training that they provided. And we do not have everyone trained that we would like to have trained. And and first of all, people can sign up with the local health department to provide the training. It's something that, you know, you don't have to be necessarily associated with a with the school system. You can actually, if you wanted to go get that trained, the health department would provide it. And I know for a fact that our supervisor of nursing is trying to get her leadership team trained also. So that number one, they can do additional training of other people within the system. And also she wants any, all of her nursing staff and and especially the administrative team trained in cases, it goes to the question also, Board Member Mickens Murray, you asked was, well, what if the, on a particular day, there isn't a a nurse there or it's a school that doesn't have a nurse? So that, so the idea being that if we have additional staff trained, their goal is then to be able to have that coverage so that, you know, you're not stuck with not having someone trained. So that she is working with the health department at this point and that it sounds like the health department has provided an okay. They're just trying to get a date to provide additional training and then get our people trained, several, her her leadership team, the nurses' leadership team trained so that they can go out and do additional training so that we can have as many people trained as possible to be able to identify, first of all, overdoses and then also to be able to administer administer the medication if it's needed. So that's about it in a nutshell, as far as the policy.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Welsh. Board members, any comments or questions? Mr. Fields.
Oh, when we say other identified personnel, are students informed who is trained in a building? Let's say there's an emergency and they can't find a nurse. Do they know who in that building is trained to administer a dose? Or is that something that just by happenstance, staff is alerted and they go to an area where a student may have, may be experiencing an overdose? Like, how does that work with non-health, non-health professionals, non-nurses?
So at this point, the only other non-health, non-nurse people that are trained are are some of the athletic directors. So but as far as what students are trained in, as far as identifying who that might be able to administer the medication, that I don't know, I'd have to get that answer for you. And I'll gladly check in with the nursing office to find that out. I do know, though, that they are, they are, our policy is saying that they should begin, and if they haven't yet, they should begin training the staff and students for signs of overdosing and then who to go to to report it so that they can get get it, get get someone to help them. So but I will check to see what they might have in place at this point. With this policy now in place, anything that they, they have done a lot in the schools already without a policy. But if there are things that have not been done previously, like, first of all, they'll be doing administrative procedure that addresses many of the things in the policy. And the training piece will be a major piece to make sure that whoever, whether it's a student or a staff member, they know immediately who to go to to get help for, say, a student they see, they think might be overdosing or something. But I will check it out for you.
Any other comments, questions? Okay. All right, hearing no further discussion. Colleagues, are there any objections to moving the policy forward? To the full board with a recommendation to seek public comment. There we go. Alrighty, hearing none. All those in favor, state by saying aye. Alrighty, those opposed. Alright, hearing no opposition, motion passes and policy will be moved to full board with the recommendation to seek public comment. Thank you, colleagues. Alrighty, six point oh, committee recommendations, public. There are two policies voted on and approved by the full board with with the recommendation to seek public comment. All right, so first that is six point one, policy thirty-five hundred. The naming of schools, school district facilities, dedicating areas of school and school district facilities or grounds and erecting monuments. And policy forty-two hundred, employee and four two hundred and five appeals before the Board of Education. So on January twelfth, twenty twenty-three, both these policies were voted on and approved by the full board with the recommendation to seek public comment. Okay, seven point oh, new business. Alrighty, there are two policies being advanced for consideration as first reader. All right, so first it is seven point one, policy zero one zero four, title nine. On December eighth, twenty twenty-two, this policy was voted by the full board to seek public comment. There's one public comment received. Colleagues may have a motion to forward to the full board revised policy zero one zero four, title nine, with a recommendation to advance consideration as first reader at the next Board of Education meeting.
I move to forward to the full board revised policy zero one oh four, title nine, with a recommendation to advance consideration as first reader at the February twenty-third, twenty twenty through two, that three, Board of Education meeting.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Has been moved and properly second. I'll now yield the floor to Ms. Welsh to give us an overview of the public comment response. Ms. Welsh, you're muted.
Okay, we already received one, one public comment for each of the policies, actually from the same person. And so for the policy on title, title nine, this particular person definitely was in agreement with the policy. But as she did say, students as young as elementary school levels are familiar with derogatory terms for for otherness and we need to help them understand this is unacceptable. And so I think she was just expressing an opinion because I know we do extensive training in that whole arena. And then the second one had to do with, what was it, policy one oh eight, code of conduct? And this person said that she she appreciated the the policy because she felt like there should be accountability for the board members. So those were your two public comments that we received.
All right, all right, thank you, Ms. Welsh. Colleagues, are there any objections to forwarding the full board to the full board revised policy zero one zero four, title nine, with the recommendation to advance consideration as first reader? Alrighty, hearing none, yes, motion passes. The policy will be moved to the full board with a recommendation as first reader. Policy zero one zero eight, colleagues may have a motion to forward to the full board revised policy zero one zero eight, code of conduct with the recommendation to advance consideration as first reader at the February twenty-third, twenty twenty-three Board of Education meeting.
I moved it forward to the full board revised policies zero one oh eight, code of conduct with a recommendation to advance consideration as first reader at the February twenty-third, twenty twenty-three Board of Education meeting.
It's been properly moved in second. Colleagues, are there any objections to the policy? Hearing none, motion passes, and policy will be moved to the full board with the recommendation to advance consideration as first reader. Alrighty, eight point oh, governance, second readers. We have no policies being advanced as second reader. Follow-ups, next steps. So follow-ups from previous meetings will be posted on board docs upon receipt. The next Policy and Governance Committee meeting will be held on Tuesday, January thirty-first, twenty twenty-three at five P M. This meeting will be virtual and please check the board page on the PGCPS website for more information. Now, ten point oh, closing remarks from Chair and Jeremy. All right, thank you, everyone, for a great meeting with meaningful discussions around board policies. I am beyond honored and excited to serve as Chair of this committee. I look forward to supporting our great work and continuing continuing the excellence that comes out of this committee. So thank you so much, everyone. Are there any additional comments from anyone before I request a motion to adjourn? Mr. Fields, Ms. Mickens Murray.
I I just want to commend our committee chair. I think that it is incredibly important that our young people are leading the way. And I'm so proud to serve under him as the vice chair of this committee. I think he is an example of the quality of student that this school district produces. And I think we should be proud that as a governing board, our student member is chairing an important committee such as this. So congratulations.
Thank you. Let's pick it, Mary.
And to Chair, Sir Ron Ruiz, I am so proud of you. You have worked very hard this year. You've helped shape the way we process the policy. And I appreciate you and I know you're going to do a wonderful job. So thank you and continue to model for other students of what they can accomplish in the Prince George's County Public School System. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Landis.
I did not want the meeting to adjourn without me making this one comment, this one observation. And that is the work that Cindy put into organizing this meeting. I followed the script. Everything was tight. That's what I'm looking for. The meeting ran well. There were no hiccups. And I'm very, very pleased. So good job, Cindy.
Cindy and Ms. Welsh and everyone who makes sure this committee meeting happens. And so with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I moved the way adjourned.
Second.
Alright, it's been moved in properly second to adjourn. The January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three Policy and Governance Meeting, any objections? Hearing none, meeting is adjourned and good night, everyone.
Quick question for a second. I heard two male voices.
Who would like to second? There you go. Alrighty, good night, everyone.
Good night. Good job. Good job.